Good afternoon. I am Trenice Riggs, School Board Chair, and the administrative informal and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 4:05 PM on this 22nd day of August 2023. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.vb schools dot com slash meetings slash live. It's broadcast on VBTV Channel 47 and on Zoom. And thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, would you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex Einstein Lab are Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Callen, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Owens.
Okay, and Mr. Cole Pepper just got in town from his job. He would be here in probably in about 15 minutes. Ms. Brown had to turn around and get something at home. She'll be right back, so that's why we started a little late so she wouldn't miss so much. And Ms. Martin wanted me to read that she has attended the U.S. Travel Conference in Georgia this week for her full-time job. She may not be able to call in, but will try to do so after the conference closing session this evening, which will probably be around 10:00, so we'll see. Okay? That's what I told her.
Something's wrong.
Okay. So we're going to start with School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. September 101 meetings with Dr. Robertson. The meeting list will be passed around for School Board members to review and confirm their meeting dates. And I want Dr. Robertson to... Did I say Rogers just a minute ago? Dr. Robertson to explain to you guys.
So I appreciate the fact that we're trying to navigate multiple people's schedule. And so when the list goes around, well, first of all, we were able to schedule several meetings prior to this meeting. But when you see the list go around, you're going to see a number of open slots. Those are open slots based upon where I have blocked time to meet with Board members. So when you look at the list, if one of those slots meets with your ability to meet with me, then pick that slot. If it doesn't, and you want to meet, and you want to work out something individually with me, then I'll commit to working directly with any individual on the Board to find a time that works more, that works for both of us. So again, if you find a time slot that works, please pick one of those. If not, just put your name on there and say, "I'll need to work something out with you separately," and that'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Robertson. The other list that is going to be going around is the 2023-24 School Adoption List. And remember, what we do is we just sign up for one at a time, and it just keeps going around from member to member until they're all filled. Please do not sign up for more than one, and know that you... This is in addition to your district, so it doesn't have to be in your district, guys. So if somebody signs up for one that's in your district, don't have a fit. I mean, because you're still, you still can go visit them. This is just to give the opportunity for people to go to other schools besides just their district schools. And remember, we have a couple of at-large seats. I think Ms. Manning and Ms. Anderson both are still at-large, so they've got all of them, so don't freak out if somebody picks one that's in your district. So I'm going to tell you, I'm going to already take Larkspur because that was my home when I retired.
I want it.
And I'm starting, so I'm taking Larkspur right now.
I got Larkspur.
Hey, if somebody had signed up and I wasn't the chair, I'd ask you to trade with me.
Well, you can go in.
Okay. So I'll start that now. I'm going to go to the right, and I'm going to ask Mike, or Mr. Callen, to, when it gets to you, if you'll just, you know, come behind us and bring it to the people over here. We'll just keep going around like that. Usually, we're in a circle when we're in the old school, our regular School Board meeting in the Einstein, but we have to kind of walk here, so... The City Council, I just wanted to remind you, City Council will be holding the joint City Council School Board Five-Year Forecast Meeting. I think it's either November 14th or 15th. I meant to ask Mrs. Tony Otto to check that for me, but it's that, I think it's one of those days. And so please mark your calendar. I will send out the complete, the for sure date, but it's either the 14th or 15th. Because the last time, you guys didn't get enough time, so I will make sure that I get that out to you guys tomorrow, okay?
You said November?
Yeah.
November 14th?
14th or 15th.
November 14th.
One of those. It's the Five-Year Forecast that they have every November. Usually in Building 19. I don't know. We'll see if it's still going to be there, okay? I'm going to skip down to one, hopefully Ms. Brown will be here in a minute. The... Well, I'll just start with that. The at-large governance seat is vacant with the selection of the new PRC Chair. Jessica Owens held that seat but will now fill the seat for the PRC Chair. Kathleen Brown has graciously agreed to fill the at-large seat. According to Law 128, this needs to be voted on by the Board. Does everyone agree for me to amend the agenda tonight to include this for information and also for action? The only reason it wasn't on before is because I just got the okay from Ms. Brown at the end of the week of last week, and the agenda had already gone out. And our next governance meeting is September 6th before our first September School Board meeting, so to wait would be another meeting without that fifth member. Is there any objection to that? We okay?
Repeat the request.
Okay. The request is, we need to, I need to amend the agenda tonight and add it to information to fill in that space, and I'll say that tonight under information. And then also to put it on action so we can vote for it tonight. And the reason being is our next governance meeting is September 6th before our next School Board meeting, so to do it in the way that we usually do it, where we give it information, and then the next meeting we come back and vote, the person wouldn't be there as, you know, in that position. Got it? Right. Is everybody okay with that? Everybody okay? No, if you aren't, let me know. Okay. All right, so I will do that. Now, the suggestion was made in our governance meeting, our last governance meeting, which was August the 3rd. Anyway, it was the first Wednesday in August, by a School Board member on that committee. And we all agreed to look at the feasibility to add $100 a month allowance to the School Board Member's Pay for technology use, technology data use on your home computers. I don't know if you remember, some of you weren't here before, but when, a couple of years ago, and it was before Mr. Edwards left, we added $100 a month to our pay to go towards the pay of our cell phones, because we use them so much for our constituents. And it's the same thing with our, if we don't have that at home, we use it all the time. So I checked with Mrs. Kype, because she deals with our School Board budget, and she checked with Ms. Pate to see if we had the money in our budget, in our School Board budget. And it would start if we, because I'm given, I'm just telling you about it now, we'd go out for information at the next meeting, and then adopt it at the last meeting in September, and it would start in October. So that would be October through the end of June. So it comes out to $10,800, and we would continue this. Now, the reason this person suggested it is because I know that they do it, City Council doesn't. They use it, and many School Boards do have that allowance to help with their cost. So we all agreed, let's bring it forth to you guys for information, or just for, well, not for just discussion tonight, not information, but just discussion. So wanted to know how you guys feel about it. Ms. Manning.
So I assume this would be a law change, correct? Okay. And my, my suggestion would, whatever the language is, is some people may not want to accept that, so maybe make it, I think the communications allowance is optional as well, so if we did that, to do it optional as well.
Okay. Is it by law, Ms. Melnick? Did we have to change?
You don't have a law. I believe you voted to get the senior executive communication allowance the last time you did it, so you would vote to give yourself an allowance.
Okay. So it's not law. But that is a good, you know, yeah, I remember we doing that, too. Okay. I'll take that under consideration, everybody. Anybody else want to respond to that? Is everybody okay for us to bring this forward for information at the next meeting? Ms. Anderson?
So the reason, and I was the one that brought this up, I started thinking about it. Without the internet, I can't function as a School Board member at home. I have to have the internet. I mean, I can use the data on my phone, but then that starts using up on my data time, so, you know, I personally feel like, I don't feel like it's too much. Our salaries are not higher than the area salaries around the region. In fact, we're way below most of the other School Board members who are in Chesapeake and even Portsmouth and Norfolk, and their school divisions are not even half our size. So this is one way to help compensate what we do. Some of us, some of us try to go to all events and, and visit lots of schools during the year, and I just feel like this is, this is compensation that we really deserve to have, mainly because, as I said, my main reason is I can't function if my internet's not working at home. So I feel like this is just one little way that we can be compensated for what we do, and I'm not ashamed to say that I'll take the money because I feel like we deserve it. We work hard, we spend our, we, my life is, you know, around, I do what I do, and I plan my vacations around these meetings. These meetings and School Board controls my life right now. So, and it has for the past 10 and a half years. So I don't plan family vacations when we have meetings, I don't plan trips when we have meetings, I don't miss unless I'm absolutely sick, and then I try to Zoom if that off. So I'm dedicated to this School Board, and I don't feel bad about asking for this particular little $100 extra a month toward our salary. So anyway, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Pate? Because Ms. Pate, Ms. Kype did consult with Ms. Pate about it. Anybody have any questions? Because she's here if you have a question. Okay? We okay? Okay. And we'll bring you up to date, Ms. Brown, after this, okay? Okay, so is there anybody else that has anything that they need to say? Okay. For administrative matters. All right, so let's get on with our show. The Summer Learning Program, welcome, Ms. Danielle Calucci, our Chief Academic Officer.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, School Board members, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Danielle Calucci, and I serve as the Chief Academic Officer in the Department of Teaching and Learning, and today I will provide an update and summary of the summer learning programs and opportunities that were offered to our students this summer. I am joined by a wonderful team who all had a hand in partnership with our custodians, food services staff, teachers, counselors, administrators, specialists, security, and so many more to provide this robust offering. So let me begin at the elementary level. We continued to offer three main opportunities to our students. In pre-K through 5th grade, we offered asynchronous lessons in math and reading each week through June 19th through August 27th. All lessons were available in Class Link. On the Virginia Beach Elementary, students were able to select differentiated options to meet their needs. In-person summer learning camps were held at 40 elementary sites. That's one more than we offered last year. Summer learning camp teachers provide in-person instruction in math, reading, and STEM, and they receive guidance lessons from counselors each week. Transportation is provided to all participants. Our Title I schools that offered summer learning camp also offered a STEM camp, and several of those schools were also able to offer an extended camp this year after the students were dismissed from our regular summer learning camp, and this was a partnership with United Way. We are also happy to share schools which did not host a camp, or provided funds from the Department of Teaching and Learning through ESAR, and this ensured every school and elementary had differentiated options to offer students and were able to offer enrichment, acceleration, or tutoring to meet the needs of their community. Allow me now to share a brief data review and the outcomes related to these. As a reminder, the Summer Learning Boost site has been live since June 19th and contains online asynchronous lessons available to all students in elementary school. Students are able to mainly review the skills that have been taught that previous school year to make sure we are preventing what is commonly referred to as summer slide. However, what's great about this option for all learners is that they can select from the grade level above or wherever their readiness level is to challenge themselves and extend their learning as well. It's completely flexible and exciting because they can access it anywhere they are. 1,400 boost lessons were launched this summer. The greatest focus of the summer learning camp in-person camps is reading and math. The standards of learning that we select for instruction are important for foundational skills and determined based on data trends. Throughout the camps, teachers analyze student growth and performance, and at the end of the camp, parents are provided a progress report. We are happy to report a slight increase in daily attendance this year, which is illustrated above in the slides, and includes the total number of students per grade level who participated this summer. The percentages at the top of each bar in the graph show the percentage of those students who attended 10 or more of the 13 instructional days provided. On average, 70% of students attended 10 days out of the 13. In kindergarten through 2nd grade, teachers report progress on students' understanding of phonetic principles and phonological and phonemic awareness. These particular objectives are chosen because of the specificity they provide to build student word recognition skills and support fluent reading. As you can see, 83, 84 to 93% of students demonstrated growth. 3rd through 5th grade teachers reported 85 to 92% of their students experienced growth in reading. The focus in 3rd through 5th grade was comprehension and word analysis. In the area of mathematics, kindergarten through 2nd grade teachers reported student progress on number sense and computation, as these foundational skills are found in all of the math strands. As you can see, 84% or more of our kindergarten through 2nd graders demonstrated growth. 3rd through 5th grade teachers reported student progress in number sense and computation as well, and 84% or more demonstrated growth over the course of the camp. As shared earlier, schools which did not house a large summer learning camp were provided funding to develop a program suited best for the needs of their school and community. Differentiated options were developed by the school's administration and specialists based on the, to provide site-based learning experiences based on their school needs. Over 300 students were able to engage in these opportunities in a variety of ways, such as problem-based learning, inquiry, hands-on science, and tutoring. While the majority of our students with disabilities receive most of their special education services in the general education setting, some students with disabilities participate in what is referred to as ESY, or Extended School Year Services. Consideration of ESY services is part of the IEP process. These services are the individualized extension of specific special education and related services provided beyond the typical school year. ESY services are delivered through a variety of settings and methods as it is a continuum of services. An IEP team determines the setting and method based on the needs of a student. 1,192 students with disabilities received these services. Overall, there were 39 more students than last year participating. Let's move on to secondary. Secondary summer school learning opportunities included middle and high school students who needed to repeat a course for promotion. Students attended one or two in-person sessions. Students who desired to take a course for the first time over the summer were also able to utilize the Virginia Beach Digital Campus, and the course section occurred from Wednesday, June 21st through Monday, August 7th. This slide displays academic performance outcomes for secondary summer school. The chart notes student performance for the repeat face-to-face courses offered, and data represents both middle and high and indicates overall enrollment and individual course pass percentages. I'll pause to give you a moment to review. The next slide contains information related to students who took a course for the first time through VBDC or Virginia Beach Digital Campus. Students who participate in these courses are either trying to get ahead to create an opportunity and they're scheduled for another course, or to stay on track for on-time graduation. 1,966 Virginia Beach Digital Campus registrations occurred, and 96.5% of students completed the course with a passing grade. Virginia Beach will continue the tradition of honoring our summer graduates at a collective ceremony for all high schools on Wednesday, August 23rd. The summer, we had 129 candidates for graduation, and 117 students will graduate. Like elementary, secondary provided an asynchronous summer learning boost option. The purpose was to build skills for success in their upcoming math and science courses in Canvas. Approximately 660 middle and high school students accessed Canvas for boost opportunities, and about 130 middle and high school students accessed it for science. A few more opportunities were offered to our students this summer that I believe make Virginia Beach special. 50 rising 7th and 8th graders at Bayside Middle were offered an avid Mission Possible Science Summer Bridge Program, which engaged students in hands-on science and allowed students to develop critical thinking and scientific problem-solving skills, which made science fun. 97 7th through 9th graders were offered the opportunity to immerse themselves in language instruction through our grant-funded StarTalk program. This program has existed for 13 years and has continued to expand each year and offers students the opportunity to learn a new language, no matter what their entry-level skill set is. This year, students studied Chinese, Russian, and Arabic, and the program was even featured in the pilot. For the first time, we also partnered with CHKD to offer a Wellness Up Camp at two of our middle schools. These three-day camps for middle school students were conducted during summer school to support select students in building resiliency, enhancing healthy coping skills, and building communication skills. The camps were free, they were led by CHKD staff, and covered the following topics: self-esteem, stress management, and relationship skills. And finally, we are pleased to share our passion for the arts even in the summer. 12 schools offered site-based summer performing arts camps this year funded utilizing ESAR funds. Over 400 students in 15 different camps participated in band, orchestra, chorus, and theater, and students participated in a culminating performance. Again, many thanks to our division's DTO coordinators, specialists, teachers, and administrators, and all staff who supported opportunities such as were described. Thank you, School Board, for supporting these programs and initiatives to meet the needs of our students. This concludes our update, and at this time, my colleagues and I are available for questions.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you.
And I apologize if this was already answered, and I was maybe distracted, for the elementary school student, students who attended a summer program, an in-person summer program. The, are the students in Achievable Dream bundled under the Extended School Year, or are they bundled elsewhere since it's part of their program?
It's a partnership, so we do support, but they participated at Corporate Landing Elementary because C-TAC was having repairs this summer and renovations, but they definitely were able to participate, and Achievable Dream supports that whole program as well.
So sorry, my question is on the numbers. Are those in the ESY numbers that looks like are Slide 12? Are they captured elsewhere?
If a student is in, like attends C-TAC Elementary, that number would be included in ESY numbers. If that's a question.
Yep, that was the question.
Anybody else? We okay?
I think we had some great results. Wow. Some great opportunities that, like you said, which makes us the best that we are, and this is one of the programs that proves it in the summer, so thank you. Lots of kids participating, so.
Thank you.
I love it. Thank you. Thank you to you and all the staff and teachers and everybody that participates in this to help our students shine like they do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, 40 elementary schools. Wow.
It is.
Yeah. All of it was impressive, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So our next is the Recovery School, and Mr. Matt Delaney, our Chief Schools Officer, will be presenting this, and we'll also have Ms. Carolyn Weems, our Vice Chair, adding some information, that she has some great information for this, too.
Bobby Jameson, Executive Director of Student Support Services, will also be involved in this presentation, especially in the question-and-answer portion. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, members of the Board, and Dr. Robertson. The purpose of this presentation is revisit the Recovery School concept and really receive guidance. guidance from the board on how we should proceed as a school division. Just as a reminder for the new board members, we provided an additional initial presentation on the recovery school concept back in July of 2022 at the School Board Retreat. At that time, the board gave us approval to move forward with exploring the possibility of opening a recovery school for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and we'll talk about some steps that we took during that time. But I think it's important just to share the purpose or the primary purpose of a recovery school is to educate students in recovery from substance use with an educational recovery focus. Ultimately, the goal is to provide a fresh start for students by providing the necessary counselor support while making progress towards a high school diploma. Our data in 2020, there are a total of forty-three recovery schools in twenty states in the United States, but this past year, Chesterfield County opened up a recovery school after receiving funding from the General Assembly, and they are regional recovery school, which is important to note. Recovery schools really aim to create a learning environment where students can receive an excellent education while also gaining support for their recovery. As a result, students must be willing to be an active participant in their education and recovery process. It's really important to note that recovery schools are not a placement in response to disciplinary infractions. Instead, they are partnerships between students, their families, and the school community. These types of schools usually operate from an off-site location for a variety of reasons. Furthermore, recovery school provides wraparound services for families that include comprehensive holistic services for youths and families in a responsive manner that connects them with services based on their specific need. In November of 2022, the School Board gave us approval to seek a lab school planning grant. Just as a reminder, a lab school planning grant came out of the V D O E that allowed schools to gather partnerships with other universities and submit a proposal. We submitted the lab school application along with our partners at Old Dominion University. Unfortunately, the V D O E denied our lab school grant application. We then worked with Joel Andrews and our legislative representatives to attempt to secure funding for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That funding was not made available, so since those funds were not provided, we have not made any progress or given extensive priority to recovery school planning. So at this point, we're going to look to the board to provide direction, but prior to Mr. Jameson and I answer any questions, we certainly want to give Ms. Weems an opportunity. She's been heavily involved in this process from the beginning. I think we're all aware of her passion and commitment to this cause. She's done many things with our schools, especially our high schools, the last two years with some community groups to bring increased attention to this challenge. So I'd like to give, provide an opportunity, Ms. Weems, for you to share some of the conversations you've had in the last few weeks.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Delaney, and I just want to thank the public who have sent emails to us, and thank you for being vulnerable and smashing the stigma. It is very hard to come forward and say, my family has a problem, my child has a problem with substance abuse disorder. So I thank you for that, and we really do appreciate hearing from you. Of course, my stories, some of you know, most of you know, the new board members, I'm going to briefly share that our daughter Caitlin had a back injury and a very traumatic soccer injury in the regional soccer tournament, Bayside versus Ocean Lakes. I remember the day. She broke her nose, her cheeks, and knocked out three of her teeth. That led to a lot of pain, and the doctors prescribed her lots and lots and lots of pain medicine. We were not told anything about the dangers of addiction from any dentist or any doctor. So by tenth grade, beyond our knowledge, she was pretty heavily addicted to painkillers. She still went to school, made great grades, got a scholarship to play collegiate soccer, but she lost her battle with addiction and died when she was twenty-one. Sorry. So it's been ten years, and you can see how painful it still is. It's been ten years, and not enough has been done to save our kids. After she died, two or three years after she died, I found out lots of information that she was getting drugs from fellow soccer players at soccer practice during the morning throughout the day, and that is a common denominator. For people here who don't understand it, if addiction has not touched your lives, I am so thrilled for you because I can't say that about many people in this room. We know so many people who suffer from this, so I want you to be aware of that, and I'm going to show some statistics, share some statistics in a little bit. So if you haven't been touched with this, just wait because you will be. If you haven't yet, you will be. Some of us in our rooms are tired of attending funerals of sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds. Okay, so that is why I'm so passionate for this because here in Virginia Beach, here in Hampton Roads, in the state of Virginia, we just don't have enough resources. I could tell you horror stories about how many doors were slammed in our face, and this is after my daughter wanted to get well. She wanted to beat this. We were in the loop. We all tried together. There is nothing, zero to almost, almost nothing here for kids, and so this recovery school would provide that. As Dr. Delaney said, we did apply for a lab school. We thought it was a great partnership. It was a great application, but after seeing those schools that were approved, it seems like the lab school direction was more for workforce development. Even though they didn't give us a reason why they denied it, the schools that got it, it was all focused on that, so I think that was the reason. So then, four or five of us went to Richmond because we didn't get the lab schools, so we were like, let's try to get a budget amendment in real quick. Well, we didn't go till January or February. Mr. Sutton went with me. I forgot who else went with me. And so we spoke to eight people, the appropriations, the budget people, they were all, yes, we need this, we need this. Well, if y'all remember last year, D O E made a financial mistake. I think it was how many millions of dollars? Seventeen million? And so there was just no money to put in schools at the last minute. So we do have legislators that are willing to carry a bill legislatively, so that's one funding option. So that's why we're here. That's not to say that the legislators don't think this is a great idea. It's just the way that it carried out last year was not optimal to what we wanted. When I met with Dr. Spence way before COVID, so we've been talking about this for four or five years, Dr. Spence was thumbs up for this, and he said to me, Carolyn, let's do it ourselves. If we wait for the state, we're going to be waiting too long. He said, we can do this, we can find the money, this is important, let's do it. We've got the people that can do a bang-out job at this school. And so that's why we were going to do it just ourselves, and then COVID hit, so that kind of put the brakes on that. Then when the lab school option came open and there was billions of dollars in that, that's why we pivoted. But Dr. Spence, and I believe that Dr. Robertson is in the same page, is we can do this. The legislature did give Chesterfield, I think, one point five million to start theirs. Theirs is a regional concept. I've talked with Chesterfield last week, and I've got some information later on that I'll tell you about their program. Two weeks ago also, I attended a roundtable. The governor sent two people. In fact, he just hired someone at the state level. He's the opioid, I don't want to say director, but kind of like that, and he's kind of in charge of going around and seeing, you know, what we're doing here and what works and what doesn't. And I point-blank asked him two weeks ago in the Slover Library in Norfolk, I said, does the governor support this? Do you support this? Do you think a recovery school is a great idea? And he said, Carolyn, I've heard the governor say publicly, we need a recovery school in every region of the state. It's that bad, and it is a priority, so we need to get help from them, obviously. Also, at that meeting, it was interesting because we had a, we had just a variety of people there, and one of our legislative aides, who was there with the legislator, shared that she had just put her son, who was going to be a sophomore in one of our high schools, on an airplane the day before that meeting to get rehab because there's nothing in the state. I hear that all the time. Florida, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Utah, we're sending our kids there because there's nothing here. Okay, so let me just show, you know, share just some broad, broad statistics. A hundred and ten thousand a year, a hundred and ten thousand people are dying in America a year. Here in Virginia Beach, in two thousand seven, when this epidemic kind of started, but it kind of really became news in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, Virginia Beach, three deaths in two thousand seven. Last year, eighty-eight. Chesapeake, sixteen to sixty. Norfolk, three deaths, ninety-one last year. Portsmouth, one death, ninety-four last year. The handout they gave us two weeks ago at the roundtable, Virginia Beach, Norfolk, and Portsmouth, they've listed the top fifteen cities of deaths just last year from fentanyl. We're three, four, and five on that list of the whole cities in Virginia Beach. It's here. It's been here. We had a D E A agent share with us two weeks ago, and he said, I wish I could tell you it's getting better. It's getting worse. It's getting worse. He said, now there's fentanyl, then we moved to car fentanyl, now there's a drug, I can't remember the name of it, it's this long, it doesn't react to Narcan. It's stronger than fentanyl, doesn't even, and Narcan is the comeback from an overdose, a life-saving mechanism that is in our nurses, thankfully for the SHAB Committee and also with our resource officers. Talking to the people in Chesterfield, I asked, what is the drug use there and what are the kids there for? Weed and fentanyl, both up there, but he said meth and cocaine are coming back, we're seeing alcohol, we're seeing it all. Our kids are struggling. So, and so basically, the reason why I'm so passionate about this is because these kids are having to move away. My daughter missed a whole year of school because she had to choose to stay alive and try to get recovery or education. It wasn't both. You had to choose, you're having to choose one or the other. And so, you know, we've got to be able to send these kids to a school where they can get the top courses that they take, plus they can have an addiction specialist, a peer-to-peer recovery specialist, the family can get help. Again, this is not punitive. This is a kid that wants to get help, and a family's in the loop, and they're all working together with the folks at the school system. If you have to choose education versus recovery, if you're using alcohol and you're in high school, you're five times more prone to skip school. If you're using weed, five and a half times more. Opioids, six and a half. Heroin and stronger drugs, seventeen times more to skip school, likelihood to skip school. So these kids are missing school. If on the, on the survey that they did statewide, asking kids if they feel sad or hopeless two, two weeks, you know, or more a year, it doubles when you're using substance abuse. So these kids are medicating, and they're actually getting worse on why they're medicating and numbing themselves. So it's pretty overwhelming. In the last four years in Virginia, according to N C D A S, drug use went up sixty-one percent with our eighth graders in the last four years, sixty-one percent. So I hope that, you know, it's sad to say that we have a problem, but we do, and we need to do something about it. Some local stories, I have done about, I think, fifty-four presentations in the last two years at our high schools. Michaela Doyle, Shannon Doyle is a lady that y'all may be familiar with. She lost her daughter. She was a sophomore at Ocean Lakes High School. Two weeks after she turned sixteen, she died of an overdose. So she's actually taken over my teams, and she's moving on with the presentation. So I did about fifty by myself with the team, and now Ms. Doyle has joined the forces and is moving forward with that. And it's amazing when we talk to these high schoolers because afterwards, we stay, we have someone in recovery talking to them, we have one who's a therapist, we have a D E A agent to tell them the true story about drugs. And I know at one of our high schools, the last time a young gentleman came up, he was either ninth or tenth grade, and he said, Ms. Carolyn, my vape has been laced with fentanyl twice this semester, had to go to the hospital, E R. And I'm like, why are you doing this? Why, you know, why? He goes, I can't quit. I'm addicted. I can't quit. And so I asked him, I said, are there drugs in this building? And he laughed, and he went to say, yeah, I'll show you how we do it. So he got out his phone, texted his plug, because that's the person that plugs you up with your stuff. He goes, you do it all by your phone now. You get your plug, they drop the drugs where I want it, let's do the football stadium, and you pay online, you pay on phone. You don't see them anymore, so it's a totally different thing. The D E A agent told us the same thing. It's a different, it's all by the phone. And he, you know, these vapes are laced with THC, and it's not the marijuana that we had twenty years ago. It's twenty-five percent more potent, and these kids are smoking it. That's why our bathrooms are being closed in our high schools. We all know it because they're vaping in there. So it's just, you know, it's heartbreaking. Another, I mean, every single time we go to these, four or five students come up and tell us that they have a problem, or their sister died, or their cousin died, or their parents have a, you know, have a problem. So it's very, very sobering to hear this. You know, we lost, like I said, Michaela a year and a half ago. This summer, I think the first week of the summer, we got an email that we lost two students from another one of our high schools, not related, a week apart. I went to the E R twice this summer for kidney stones, and I try to educate everybody, you know, where I go, I educate. So I tell them about my pain story, about I hate pain medicine, but when I have a kidney stone so bad, I have to get it. The E R in our city said, oh my gosh, that's the number one reason adolescents are here in the E R, drugs. He said, if anybody doesn't believe that in your school board, have them come and witness, I'll hook them up with someone from Centerra and watch what happens in the E R. She said, it's overwhelming. Then I go to another city, but Chesapeake one here with another kidney stone, and the E R doctor that took care of me said, just last month, I revived, well, it was in May because I went in June, yeah. He said, it was in school here in our city, two high school students, unrelated cases. They did Narcan at the school, saved their lives, transported to me, we revived them, they got in school. He said, it's all over our schools. So, you know, it's, we've got to realize that kids are struggling, and if you, you hear it everywhere. I mean, every single news, you hear about kids struggling. So frankly, I'm, like I said, I'm tired of going to funerals. You know, in the last two years, my sons had two baseball friends that played with them die. We've had a nineteen-year-old that plays the drums in our praise band at church overdose die. I mean, it's all over the place. So obviously, we want to get direction. Obviously, we're not going to spend a hundred thousand dollars per student. We know that the community wouldn't like that, we can't afford that, so we need direction, but we don't have to leave it all up to the state. You know, this is not a thing that the state's just going to say, ah, we would love y'all to do this, here's two million dollars. We've got to say, we're committed to this, and then sure, go for state funding. Anne Farrell Tate, I said she would already carry the bill. Okay? We can go for some of those abatement funds. Do we need to write a resolution to city council? I've already signed up to speak at one of those meetings, you know, to put some of that money that the city has gotten from settlements from Jewel and other pharma, big pharma companies earmark some of that for the school system. Do we need to get it, try to get it directly into the governor's budget? And then we can budget for this locally. You guys, we have a one point one billion dollars. We're going to have to spend some money. We're going to have to either say, this is worthy, we're going to budget some for it, or if it's not worthy, if it's not your priority, I'll go somewhere else and try to get, do something else. I don't want to dilly-dally around, we're in dire need. The more, the longer we wait, and that's why Dr. Spence didn't want to wait, the longer we wait, the longer it's going to take, and more kids are going to die. This is something that I think we need to aggressively pursue, if it is a priority, to give us direction to go pursue all these ways to get funding, to map out exactly what it's going to look like, to decide if we, do we want to go with Portsmouth, Norfolk, Chesapeake? Do we want to go with all fifteen school divisions in our district? You know, that's problematic because you've got some across the water. So, you know, so, so basically, I want you to realize that this is kind of urgent. We've been talking about it, and we want direction of if you guys are going to support this and if we can move forward. And I think that's all I have to say, if you have any questions. And I want to say, I mean, look at the team we've got. Mr. Delaney, Bobby Jameson, Jean Saltoner and I went to New Jersey and toured their recovery school there. You've got four people here so in the game. Even Dr. Robertson said, you know, we may even pursue that some families on a sliding scale may pay part tuition. I mean, that's something that, you know, we can look at a lot of stuff because usually when you have money, skin in the game, you know. I know I've given free tennis lessons and nobody shows up, and I charge, you know, a hundred dollars, and all of a sudden, I have a waiting list. It's just like a weird phenomenon, but it happens. So we've got, but we just need direction. We've got a great team. Bobby Jameson, if you have anything to say, I would love for you to come up and speak if you can add anything to this because you're in the trenches, you know, this stuff's real. But we've got a great team that can put a great recovery school to help save lives, to help families, to get these kids back in their home school, and to be an example of how to duplicate this over the state. and to be an example of how to duplicate this over the state. Thank you.
Well, not much for me to add. Excuse me, outside of, you know, thank you for your vulnerability again, Ms. Weems, in sharing your story. Um, I, I believe during the PPMC, I, I, I made the comment that it's really an or situation for families, and you brought up that point, again, Ms. Weems, that is recovery or education. Um, many times, that's, that's just what, that's the decision that our families are facing. Um, also, there was some discussion that same day about, uh, you know, a path forward with what we could do to address, uh, addiction as well as drug abuse in Virginia Beach and regionally. And a recovery school is an option. I think that if we can be provided with direction on the variety of resources that we could provide through our school division, that the board would have an educated or informed decision to make from a prevention standpoint, from a more reactive standpoint of this is what we're seeing. Um, there's SAPE, that we already have Substance Abuse Intervention Program, that we could, uh, you know, add additional resources to, or layer, you know, having gone through SAPE once, what is something else that we could then provide to our students, which then a recovery school could live as a separate option? So I, I don't, I think my biggest piece for the board to know is it does not have to be all or none with a recovery school. A recovery school would make a huge impact in our community. But if the answer is no, or happens to be no for that direction, please allow us the opportunity to explore other options that we could presently, pr-, you know, ideally then present to you.
Ms. Weems?
Yeah, I just had something, I'm sorry, that I, that I forgot to add. Yeah, and, and we do have some things already. We're doing presentations in school. We have the ten-day SAPE program. But the thing that I know personally, and I hear over and over again, which was true in my case, a ten-day program that helps, a twenty-eight-day program that only, all of our insurance is, I mean, this is like a joke. You send your child twenty-eight days, and they're supposed to come back. You know, and they've got it all under control. Um, these kids and these families need something for more than just a Band-Aid. They need resources, and, and the, the recovery school in Chesterfield, like I said, you can stay for three months there. It's, it's kind of like an IEP. Each kid gets their individual plan, and they're required to do stuff outside of that school. The family's required to do it. Or you can stay for four years. And the cool thing about it is there's seven universities in our Commonwealth that offer these programs at their college level. Um, Rams in Recovery is probably the strongest. You could be a VCU Ram, and you can continue your recovery there. Longwood has a new one. Um, base, I think they concentrate really on alcoholism. Um, UVA, so there are seven schools. So these kids could get some support here, you know, to get on their feet, and then they can put one of the schools to get support there. So, but, um, but these short-term fixes, that's not what, we can do that, but we need something long-term, because that's what I hear constantly, and I know it personally is true.
Okay, Ms. Melnick.
Okay, so that was great that you mentioned that, because I would say, I could probably speak for the board and say, how would we move forward? What are our options? Where do we go? I know initially, you took a trip to New Jersey. You investigated. You've hit a roadblock. But this is huge, and, um, how do we move forward? And can we move forward without, um, a dollar figure in mind first? Um, are, and you don't have to answer these, but these are just, um, are the other districts interested in joining forces for a regional program, even if it's just the South Side? Um, how, what will this look like? Where will this be? Um, you know, there are just so many unanswered questions, so, um, not against it at all. I just, you know, there's, this is, this is a huge step. And, um, so, yeah, how, how do we proceed? Um, and when do we proceed? And, um, the, the other thing, though, I would just like to say to my colleagues just separately from this is, sometimes as a school division, we have to make decisions for a small minority population in the division, or we have to write a resolution for a minority population in our schools. And as we move forward and, um, grow and learn, um, I hope that we remember that money and resolutions sometimes can occur for smaller groups, like our transgender groups, and this recovery school. And all donation, we're talking one-half of one percent, and that, and that those things matter too. So as we move forward, just be mindful that, you know, money and programs will also occur for, um, everybody in a different way. But I think you, I think you get my drift.
For one of the questions that you posed, I do believe, from an efficiency standpoint, one of the biggest things we would need to know initially, regional or local. Um, if we were to take some next steps regionally, obviously, that would take some time to meet with various representatives from our local school divisions. And then that would allow us to start to develop a different plan than what we would have to do locally. And so just again, from an efficiency standpoint, that level of direction would be helpful. And we can explore to then come up with some of those additional quest, or answers to your questions in terms of location, what would best fit, how, and, you know, money would still continue to be a conversation, transportation for that matter, types of resources, and go from there.
Do we stand a better chance of state funding if it's a regional program? Because it's a lot for one division to swallow, um, especially with city council now talking about, um, revisiting our revenue sharing formula. And so we don't know where that's going to land, and how much money is at stake just for our own division. So again, not saying no to this program at all. There's just so, I, I just wonder if we have a better opportunity of state funding if it's going to multiple school divisions.
Based on conversations that we've had, Ms. Weems included, a regional approach, I do believe, may have a higher chance for receiving additional funds from just other sources. Uh, from the simple fact that it would have a larger impact than just one locality. Uh, but that's something, again, that we can continue to ask questions about and learn more, and then see what the appetite is across our, our South Side, as well as all of region too.
And so then my last question would be, are, i- is administration looking for a thumbs up for us to investigate this this evening?
That is correct.
Yeah, I, Dr. Robertson, can you speak and talk about the regional thing? What you're going to be doing with that?
Right, so upon direction from the board, if the board indicates that this is worthy of further exploration, um, then I would contact my colleagues across seven-five-seven, and my colleagues being the superintendents, to determine whether or not there was an interest in any of the divisions, uh, to get involved in a partnership with Virginia Beach City Public Schools around this concept of a regional recovery school. Uh, so all I need is direction from the board. And I would offer that, uh, I, I do recognize that there's a cost associated with whatever we do. I think we're way too early to, to kill an idea because of cost. I think we need to, to, to explore every, our, our staff. We're committed to doing this. So all we need is to say, go forth and investigate. Bring us back information. Let's see if we can get this thing down to a reasonable cost that we can then decide. You guys can make an educated decision as a board to determine whether or not you can support it based upon the costs.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Anderson.
So my first question is, um, would a recovery school take place before a rehab center for a, for a student, or after a rehab su-, center? Or would it matter?
Actually, that, this is-
Or instead of?
Each, and I don't mean to give you the answer of like, whoa, you're going to go on both sides of this, but honestly, it's going to be case by case. There are going to be situations where a student really does need to stop focusing on education and travel outside of the state to participate in rehab. With that in mind, that same student may then return, and a recovery school can serve as that transition location for the student, and they may remain there, to Mrs. Weems's point and what we saw in New Jersey, or they may remain for a short period of time to then transition back to their comprehensive school. So there, the recovery school can serve as, uh, an endpoint for some. It may serve as a second step for some. It, it could serve in a variety of capacities.
Okay, thank you. Um, I've, I've got a couple more questions. I was going to ask how much would a startup cost be, but I'm going to skip that for now, because if we're committed, we're committed. But I just, um, I, I want to know, do we have, currently have resources available if we wanted to start this and then maybe bring other, um, school divisions locally into it? Like, like we started on our own? Do we have the resources to start it on our own, and then invite Chesapeake or Norfolk or wherever, you know, to, to participate with us after we get it up and running? Do we have that, those resources?
From a clinical services standpoint, we do have partners that are ready to step in and step up. Uh, City of Virginia Beach, Jim Thornton and I just communicated about this last week. He offered an opportunity with some new grants that have been made available to his office. They might be able to staff what we need from a clinical standpoint. We continue to have connections with Meridian. We have Life Change Institute, Centerra and CHKD, although they do not have specific substance abuse or addiction services, they do have counseling services that they said they could then offer. So through partnership and potentially through the city, we would not have to pay. But through partnership, we could provide those clinical services. From an instructional standpoint, we have a few models that we could look at, whether we leverage, uh, online courses with in-person support. So it may not be that we need every different kind of teacher in this recovery school. We may need licensed educators to provide tutoring and some support, instructional support from an English language arts mathematics standpoint. So there's different ways we could look at it. And if we were asked to turn that around, we would lean heavily on our partners to come back with some options for you.
Okay. Um, my next question is, um, w- would a, um, a, a regional school, I'm, I'm thinking of sustainability down the road. And so do you feel that a regional school, and you already answered sort of Ms. Melnick when she said we stand a better chance? Um, I, for sustainability purposes, I feel like we need the state to really step in. That's why I'm, I'm leaning toward we need a regional approach to this, because sustain, we can't sustain it all on our own, just by ourself. Uh, we might be able to do some startup, but we, we have to have, we have to look down the road and say, okay, if we're going to do this, and this is important enough, this is something that we need to be able to sustain, you know, forever. You know, until this problem kind of goes away. I don't think it's ever going to go away. Um, so sustainability is I'm concerned about.
And I think that's where the conversation Dr. Robertson having with colleagues would let us know a few more details there.
Okay.
Yeah, and so Ms. Anderson, you're exactly right. Uh, with, we bring back a plan, the plan would have to be something that can demonstrate success, not only initially, but long-term. And, uh, what, although we do have some things in place, what we don't have in place any longer is a location.
Yeah, okay.
So we're going to have to go back to the drawing board on a location, because a regional approach may lend itself to a location closer to the border of Norfolk and Chesapeake versus all the way down at the oceanfront.
Right.
So again, we just need this group to say, you know what? Go forth and do some homework. Come back and, and gi- give us what you have, and, um, that's what we're looking for.
My last question really is more directed toward, uh, Ms. Lynetti. Um, as a school system, w- w- would we be held responsible if a student doesn't respond and, and, and relapses? Would we, we held responsible for that? Or would parents have to sign some type of a waiver for this?
My understanding when I talked to Chesterfield about what they were doing is the expectation is that you are clean and in recovery. You should be showing up to school sober. Obviously, we're going to have to deal with those circumstances where you aren't. So that is something we're going to have to really work through, part of that piece of it. There is an anticipation that students will relapse, and how we handle that is something we're going to have to manage, whether they stay in the school setting or they go back to therapy. We're going to have to look very carefully at that. Obviously, we do not need students at school. They're actively dealing drugs or using drugs. That's a problem. But if they are, uh, in a recovery mode, that's what we're going to have to manage, how we're going to handle that.
Ms. Weems?
Um, yes, and Chesterfield actually is going to send us their whole, like, book, their, their whole model. Um, and, and we're just haven't gotten in those details, but the, I asked them how they did that. And that's why they're not in an existing school, because you're going to have, frankly, different rules. Um, I learned last week that relapse is no longer used. It's re-, what is that, Bobby, reuse? It's tur-, return to use.
Return to use.
So I learned something just last, last week, return to use. Um, they give random drug testing. They give drug testing that you know about, both. And they have like three, you have one relapse, something happens. If you, one return to use, something happens. The second one, something happens. The third one, I mean, they have, you know, different things. So that's just something when we get, when we move forward, that's something that this team and whoever, you know, pr-, the providers will do all those details and obviously work with legal. But they're going to send me their complete handbook of, for parents.
Okay, Ms. Manning.
Thank you. Um, well, first, I just really want to acknowledge, um, and thank Ms. Weems for her leadership and strength on this topic. I know that it's very difficult for her every time she talks about it. Um, so I, I have no doubt that she has saved many, many lives in her advocacy, and, um, she's taught me a lot, um, about the topic as well. And so thank you, Ms. Weems. Thank you to the staff members who've also joined in on this effort. As Ms. Weems said, um, there's probably not one person in this room who knows someone who ha-, or who has been impacted themselves by addiction. So, so thank you all. Um, and, and as we look at the purpose of this, the purpose of this is not, i- it's to educate, but it's also to save lives. And I think that we could probably all agree that that's extremely important, and that it's something that we should make a priority. Um, so I would like for our board to make this a priority. I would like the board to direct administration to come up with a wish list and maybe a proposed budget, um, and, and bring it back to the board quickly. Um, I would like to get this started as soon as possible. Um, but I think our staff, they need that direction in order to be, in order to move forward. Um, I do have a question for Ms., it's probably for Ms. Lynetti. I know that we had that class action settlement against, um, with Juul. And, um, but it's my understanding that the money goes to the city, and then they have to determine how it's going to be distributed.
You're talking about the opioid. We were not part of the opioid. Juul was a different settlement. I, and I have to speak to you in close session about another matter. I can talk about that. The opioid settlement, you were not a participant, and that was the city that participated. You ended up settling, if you remember, I did have to bring you some of that paperwork to settle off so the city could get it. And we did provide a significant amount of information to the city to use on what we were seeing on the impact of opioids in schools. And I think Mrs. Weems has participated in some of those discussions about where that money should now be going. So that might be something to discuss. But you were technically not a defendant in that.
Okay. Do we need to create a resolution to have the board ask the city to give us that money? I mean, how do we get that money?
I'm going to have to follow up as to, I know that they've been having public sessions about how to spend the money on there. So I think you need to be over there speaking of that. I don't know if that, that might be a conversation between the two boards, the, the city council and the board.
Yeah, so maybe, um, Ms. Weems and Ms. Riggs could engage with the mayor and vice mayor on that topic.
Well, I know that Ms. Me-, Ms. Williams shared with you.
Yeah, the city has just released a whole schedule of input sessions, and it's by districts, like district, what am I district? What district am I in now? Anybody? Anybody?
Nine.
Nine, okay, sorry. So I know I signed up to speak at District Nine. So it's all over the city and it's basically, what do you want us to do with this money that we were awarded with settlements? But I think it would be a good idea if Ms. Riggs and I have a meeting with the mayor and the vice mayor to discuss this. Or to send a formal resolution that it's not just me, because I think people think, oh, it's just Carolyn Williams, you know, where's everybody else? It's, oh, poor Carolyn, she's the only one that had a, you know, child that died of this. You know, but I think if we get together and send something over there as a group, we want to pursue this. We have helped y'all get the settlement basically, and so we wanna know if we can have X amount of money. I think that's very appropriate.
And maybe that's, yeah, I I would be happy to sign on to a resolution, um, in support of that if if you would like to draw that up.
Definitely are asking for feedback and how the public wants to spend that money, so.
Okay.
You know, we, I think we should put our name in that.
Yeah, and then just lastly, I would like to ask the board to make this a budget priority. Um, I think that that I I think that that should be on the top of our list. I think that we're gonna need to to have different funding streams. We're not, even if we do get that money from the city, that's just a a one-time fund. But I I would like to ask the board to make this a priority in our ongoing budget as well, so thank you.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. Um. I guess one of my questions. May already be on the, uh, on the answering, uh, phase. Uh, Ms. Williams, you said that Chesterfield is going to be sending kind of their their plan. Is that to our administration, will we as the board be able to to kind of view that? I I'm just curious kind of how how they've structured it, how it works.
Yeah, yeah, I was just on a Zoom call with them and I actually talked to the coordinator that they have running the school, kinda like one of our academy coordinators. And so he said he would send it to me and I plan, of course, sharing that, but again, that's the details that we. In my opinion, we want them to figure that out, they're the experts and the providers that we get. But yes, I'm gonna, once I get that, I will share it with everybody, send it on. But again, that's after we say move forward and then they figure out the best way to do it. And once they, if we use someone here or we hire someone to be the director coordinator or something, that's what that team decides. You know, how it's gonna work, in my opinion.
Okay, and I, um, I agree, I want the experts, uh, to be the ones really crafting. How things are gonna look, because I think it's important as a district that we remain committed to evidence-based practices. And, uh, evidence-backed policies. Uh. I I'm curious though, kind of scope, like, are they serving middle school and high school in this program? Would we be looking at a combined middle school or high and high school approach versus just a high school approach? Because I think that that's just something for us to be considering in in terms of, uh, size of this project. Or if we're gonna start smaller and then later maybe be thinking about branching out. Um, and that piece also kind of correlates for me with. Amount of teaching staff that we may be looking at. Um, I'm not sure where we are this school year with, uh, teaching staff and vacancies. Uh. For me, that weighs in a little bit about where I am with, yes, let's push forward in researching, opening another program. If we have large amounts of vacancies in our current program versus. This seems really under control and we feel fairly confident that we can staff what we already have committed to and find some additional teachers. Uh, to staff, uh, another location.
And and just to add to that, um, I mentioned this briefly earlier. So obviously, as we go through a startup process, we're gonna look at a variety of needs and things that need to be addressed. From an immediate or an initial startup standpoint, though, that's where we're going to leverage other instructional. Options that are currently available to us that may not require an in-person teacher. So Virtual Virginia serves as an example. We have other options through, uh, we're we're no longer with Apex, but really with Edge Annuity. And different things that we could do, students who need credit recovery courses, there are those versions of courses through VBDC. As well as through Virtual Virginia, well, really Edge Annuity, and then full-term or full-time courses. So we may have to start there.
Okay.
And then work with providing with that tutoring and other forms of tutoring. We have three different layers of tutoring that would then be there for additional support. And then should we need someone on site for instructional support, now we're looking at something, and again, this is all speculation.
Sure.
That it may not be an FTE. We might be looking at a variety of TEAs who are coming in as tutors to support our students. So from an instructional cost, we might be able to mitigate some of that, but those are the things that we'd be exploring and bringing back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let me just chime in if I may, Chair.
Yes.
Sure, okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I I think if, I think they had like two and teaching instruction instructional staff at the one that we toured. And Chesterfield does the same thing, that you have one or two teachers there because you're having kids. Ninth grade English, twelfth grade English, you can't have a ninth grade teacher there in person for one child and a tenth grade teacher, you know, you can't do that. So we use our technology, um, you know, to do that, but you have two people there to help facilitate, then if you need extra, you layer it on, yeah.
Okay, and then, um. I would be interested in hearing about, uh, a regional approach. Uh, I would feel much more comfortable, uh, knowing that we could secure. Some level of funding from General Assembly, the same way, uh, Chesterfield had when they moved forward with theirs. Uh, I would, uh, be interested in. While giving a thumbs up to administration to explore. Uh, interest from other divisions in the the regional concept. Um, also like to hear, uh, some proposals or thoughts about what we can implement. As a prevention layer strategy, uh, starting in our elementary and middle schools. Uh, now we lost a long time ago, the the DARE program for a number of different reasons and. Um, I I would love to see something that has some, at least evidence-informed, uh, backgrounds. Coming back into the schools when we're looking at those statistics that, um, by seventh and eighth grade. A lot of students have already done the experimentation. It says to me that starting these conversations in seventh and eighth grade is already too far beyond. That I'd like to see something curriculum-based, I don't know how we fit it in with our timing and all of the things that we are already trying to squeeze in an instructional day. But, um, for us to put something on the the end, uh, to try and fix the problem without also. Putting a a good layer on the beginning to try and prevent the problem, um. I feel like we need that that balance before we start looking at that budget of end. So those are my thoughts on exploring, I'm open to the the exploration.
And we do have cr- um, opioid-focused curriculum that was added to our health classes three years ago. That's mandated by the state to teach and it starts in first grade. But we need to vamp that up because it kinda depends on what school you go to. I've talked to the schools that my kids do to, went to, because they know the story, the health teachers like. Like religiously do it, I mean, they've shown me posters the kids have made, by ninth grade, they're doing PowerPoints about drugs, what it does to your brain. First grade, they're showing a prescription bottle in our curriculum, um, that says this is not candy, if you see one of these, hand it over. So, um. Who worked on that curriculum Bobby? Who who, uh, she's no longer here, she's in Richmond.
Um, um.
Who's the superintendent in Richmond? No, Amy Cashwell, wo- with her team, worked on the opioid-focused curri- um, curriculum, aligned it with all our SOLs and it's in our health classes. In fact, the governor's office from that meeting just asked to to get a copy of our curriculum. And it's free to all school divisions and they're supposed to be implementing it, but it's something that we can vamp up on.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful, and sorry, but, um, that curriculum, we have it kind of integrated, starting in first grade. And it it's all all the grades up through tenth, so in their health PE.
Yes, and we need to take a look at that because some of our students, because of online health and PE and because playing sports versus class, they're not getting it all. So we do ne- need to maybe revamp and look at the placement of that curriculum.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Brown?
Thank you, um, so I just wanted to just explore the cost because because I believe in PPMC. You had mentioned for twenty students, it was about a cost of one point five million. Was that to start, was that annually, was it?
That was over two years on the proposal that we initially had in PPMC.
And then you had just mentioned it, like, uh, Ms. Williams, you said about a hundred thousand per student? Is that, is that just an estimate or?
No, I was just saying, of course, we're not gonna.
Oh, I see.
Sell to the public or the board that, okay, we're gonna spend, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a student on our own budget. I mean, nobody would agree to that, that's why we've gotta pursue different funding. And we've got it, and we've got a lot of different areas to pursue that, we've got, I I just listed five just here, so, yeah.
Okay, so based on that, I, you know, in lending, if somebody comes to us and says, we haven't been paying rent, we haven't been paying a mortgage. And we have nothing saved for a future housing expense, we always say, how do we have? Uh, how do you have the ability to now fit this into your budget? So what I would say is maybe as a suggestion, um, we need to start fitting this in our budget. And just, and whether we use it, you know, we decide on a dollar amount. And then it, and then that way can, we can show that it's something, it's sustainable, it's something we can continue putting into our budget. And then, you know, if a regional recovery school or if things don't happen right now, we can use those for layered programs along with SAFE. Um, and at least have something that is working now, it's budgeted, um, so it's kinda earmarked, um, in on top of mind. And then that way it shows other divisions, other, um, areas, you know, whoever we're asking, that this is something that we were already budgeting for. Um, something that we can work towards in the future. So, you know, we, I guess maybe if we could figure out a dollar amount that we could budget, um, every year towards this project, then it's, you know. I- it's an opportunity for us to show that we have the good faith and goodwill and the ability to to sustain this. So, um, so, yeah, I mean, I I would recommend continuing looking forward and seeing options, um, earmarking money in our budget right now. And again, if if it's not something that happens right this minute, because we're still exploring all of those options. At least we can use it for sustainability programs now, um, to assist along with SAFE, so. Uh, so that that would be my question or recommendation and suggestion.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown?
Sure, so, um. You know, the numbers are still rising for addiction and I I think that was what was clear, um, from Ms. Williams. And I think what I just heard her say is that she's been working on trying to get this off the ground for almost four years. So I think the time for direction is now and I. You know, I like the idea of a local option, I'm okay with the idea of a regional option. I think we should explore the feasibility of both. I do think that we need to move forward, um, with this. The truth is, I'm, and I I looked up some data while I was just sitting here. A- about fifteen percent of our youth suffer from some variety of addiction. Um, just while I was sitting here, I started to think back to my high school peers. Um, that I know were using at that time, and I know of four people offhand. Um, that did not have the opportunity to enter into recovery, that have died, um. And. I do believe that if they had the opportunity presented to them to recover, um, sooner, that. You know, perhaps they could have seen that and, you know. And not died, um. The the other thing is, is it touches every single person that they know, um, you know, as Ms. Williams said. It would be, um, probably hard to point to anybody in this room that has not had, um, an experience. Uh, with addiction, uh, in somebody they love, um. And recovery sometimes is also cost prohibitive for families. It's very, very, very expensive to go somewhere else to seek recovery. And in fact, um, sometimes people end up emptying out. Everything they own just for that hope of recovery and. Um, you know, we had a presentation on the science of hope in our retreat and and I believe that this goes hand in hand. Um, with that hope, I think this provides families and members of our community that hope when it comes to the struggles with addiction. Um. I do like the idea of a resolution, um, you know, that's a budgetary thing. Um, I think we could say, hey, you know, as a school board, we resolved that we would like part of these abatement funds. I I do intend to speak at my district, um. Hearing, I guess that's what it's called. Um. But I I do think that we need to move forward with exploring it and, um, what I don't want to see. Is us get to a point where we've waited another four years. On deciding what we are doing while the community is waiting for that hope, um, and those solutions, so, thank you.
Thank you, um, Ms. Melnick, and then we we have two minutes and we need to wrap it up, okay?
So the, um, the budget development begins in a couple of weeks. I think that's what they told us, that it starts in September, so to start saying, you know, this needs to be a number one priority. I think we need a little bit of direction, so my question is, how long is this going to take? Do you think to get us something back? So, I mean, let's be hon- let's be honest about the timeline here, because while I don't mind putting some money aside. They're starting in September with budget development.
And. So I'll take that one. Yeah, so that's a good question, Ms. Melnick, um, and I can tell you that we'll put together a group to try to get something back to you as quickly as possible. It would be unrealistic to think we could have anything in place for this school year. So however, you do need to have some type of idea if you wanna start putting money aside as part of the next budget development process. You do have a few months for that, so.
Okay.
We're not gonna drag our feet on this, you guys give us the go, go ahead, we're prepared to deploy. It just may be four weeks before we get back to you with another update.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is to go forth. We want you to do this, right? Okay, so we want you guys, we want you to go ahead and start calling your constituents, your your colleagues as superintendents in the regional area. Let's start looking at doing this so we can do this now.
Is it, uh, the boards, is is it the will of the board that we can continue to work directly with Ms. Williams as the spokesperson for this?
Yes, yes, I I mean, do you guys agree Ms. Williams would be spokesperson? And I don't mind Ms. Williams and I speaking to, um, city council. So, you know, and maybe eventually we get up a resolution, eventually soon, um, but anyway, yes, yes. We good? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, I really do appreciate it, I appreciate this a lot.
Okay, um. Yeah, this, um, we're gonna take the school circulation into the room where we're eating dinner so we can finish this up.
Where do we stop? Can you just keep it going when we get out there? Yeah, because.
Yeah, I can wait, I can wait and and put it out there. So I think we've got like four each, well, I'm on my fifth one, so five times eleven is.
Then you can just start again.
Fifty-five, we've got about fifty-five schools taken, so we'll start again when we get back on the, um, dice.
We've only gotten four, so.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna send it so y'all can get to your fifth and then we'll start with our sixth person.
Start on the dice.
Yes, okay, so, um.
So we're not, we're just doing the start on the dice.
Yes, so we're gonna move, we're gonna close, um, this workshop. And we will be doing closed session after our major meeting, okay?